It is four o'clock and we will call the Kerrville City Council Workshop Agenda to Order. Good evening, everybody. Thank you for being here. And Shelley, will you read us in?
I may address City Council regarding an item on this agenda. Comments must be relevant to the agenda item. This is not intended to be a question and answer session. Prior to speaking, each speaker must fill out their speaker request form and submit it to the City Secretary. The speaker request form must be submitted before the meeting is called to order, and each speaker is limited to four minutes. We do have one citizen speaker, Peggy McKay.
Peggy McKay, 103 Westchester. First of all, I'm requesting that when we, when y'all discuss the budget, if you would put it in the regular City Council meeting rather than a workshop, it's impossible to get background information to the public for review before we come to the workshop. And we have a little bit better luck with the City Council. There's usually more information. And there is precedent for having it at City Council in years past. Far as I can tell, this is the first time it's done in a workshop. Regarding the rate and the budget, I realize the appraisal district sets the values for all the property. And I believe it's set at market value. But only the City Council can set the rate. And the rate is what determines with, with the appraised value that's set. But the rate can raise or lower the actual dollar figure that the taxpayer pays. And you are our representatives. We have no connection that where we can do anything at the appraisal district except protest. But our last resort is City Council. And regarding the budget, it's hard not having exact numbers for citizens to deserve, to determine the amount of revenue that the property taxes will produce this year and whether or not that amount will be greater or less than 2022. Only the City Council has the power to set the rate. And clearly, those numbers give us a comparison to the previous year. Therefore, I can't be specific on, on how much more income or revenue we may have this year because we just don't have, the public doesn't have the numbers. And going to the water fund in 2022, 23, there was concern about meeting the budget numbers because the effects that the drought has had on revenue. Because this account has no room, no wiggle room. That it's pretty set. The rate increases for '23 are presented as small. However, as I understand it, the increase is five and a half percent for water, five and a half percent for sewer. And this is on top of rate increases in 2018, 19, and I believe 20. So all that is compounded on a citizen's rate and the money they're paying. And now if I have my increases for this year correct, that'll be 11% on top of the previous rates that have been compounded with increases for three years. In 2018, the street fee was taken out of the water account and transferred to general fund in the amount of $184,536. When you remove that from the water account, it was moved to the general fund to help with the street maintenance fee. But strangely, that same amount is the amount that was produced from the increase in our water rate. Inflation looms large on the horizon with new forecasts much more dire than we've received. With all the, the rate increases that we've had here and in other billings the people have, we would welcome the, the, that you forego that street fee, which may help our rate increases. And also, no more taxes collected than the previous year revenue.
Thank you, Peggy.
Thank you.
And Peggy, you can get all of those numbers. They'll either be online on, on the website, so they're all there.
Well, it made me, I couldn't be as prepared as I wanted to tonight because I didn't have them. And for that, I'm sorry.
Thank you.
That's the end of the citizen speakers.
All right. Thank you. All right, Julie. Is your, is your team?
I'm sorry?
Does your team dream?
Memorize.
Memorize? Okay.
Yes. Before we get started, I, since this is at a book, a workshop, I wanted to introduce our finance staff if I could. I think there's a lot of things that go on behind the scenes. You always see me, you always see Trina, but we're not the reason things get done. So just wanted to take an opportunity to do that today. So these guys are the reason your financials come out like they do, okay? Serena Crips, so she right arm, truthfully. Accounts payable, so for example, this week, 240 invoices, I think. Purchasing compliance has helped us rewrite the purchasing policy. 1099s at the end of the year, more things than I can even count that she does. All her finance metrics and too many things, too many things. Jacob Bogus, he started as an intern with us. He's a Shriner student and is now an accounting assistant. So has been instrumental in helping us with the budget document this year and is kind of the jack of all trades. Whatever we need done goes to Jacob. Kristen Akers handles all of our cash. So bank reconciliations, investments, cash flow, any new projects. If we have a software conversion, she takes the lead on those with other city departments to make sure everything hits the ledger correctly. Randy Van Winkle, accounts receivable and again, a lot of other things. Fixed assets is one of the big things that she does also. So any money coming in, make sure it gets recorded correctly in the right place and reconciles all of our external funds that come in and then manages all of our fixed assets to make sure they're depreciated correctly. And Cody Scott, he is our compliance coordinator managing all of our city contracts. So anything we have with external third parties minus large construction projects, making sure that reporting is done. All of our annual reporting, and it's a lot that we have to turn into the state and other places. Biggest thing that he's doing right now is all these new GASB standards. So learning GASB 87, 96, 94, so a lot of work going on there and then also helping with the budget. And then Mary Day is our utility billing customer service person. And I wanted to introduce her because I think that a lot of people don't understand that everything we do starts there. So most money that we receive, other than what comes directly to the bank, starts in utility billing. So it's not just utility billing, but they handle cash for the entire city. So a lot of good work that happens. And so I wanted to make sure we could introduce them today so that you knew a face with a name.
Julie, how many combined years of experience does your department have?
I have 10 governmental.
Oh, governmental, 20.
One.
10.
Almost one.
Almost one. Four, four, yeah. Too many, yeah.
Okay.
A lot.
So, and yours?
Five. And Trina's 14.
About 60 years.
Something like that.
Just curious.
Yeah, we try and keep each other straight. Wanted you guys to be able to put a face with a name today.
Thank you. Thank you for doing that. Thank you all for all that you do for us. And it's nice to see that you're not all just babbling and then grinning on after all of this, so.
They can put up with me every day. It's a good thing. Okay, so we'll just go ahead and jump right in. I did want to address one thing for Ms. McKay. So we did publish those numbers on July 31st on the website and, but also in the library and City Secretary. So the tax rate, all the numbers, including the increase in revenue and all those kinds of things are available. But if there's specific information you need, call me. I'm happy to talk through those with you if there's specific questions you have as we go through. Okay, so we're gonna kind of do a little deeper look at the proposed budget. And we'll be taking this kind of in pieces to give a little bit of us a rest. Definitely stop us if you have questions. We want to discuss it or clarify. If I had a typo, it was probably just to put in there to check and see if you were checking. So I gave you a printout just in case that was easier. If you wanted to take notes or something like that to follow up with later or later on the presentation. So quick overview, calendar in the budget process. I know we've talked about that quite a bit. Talk about the current economy just a little. Fiscal year '22 accomplishments and where we are this year, just high level. Budget summary of overall, so I'll give you kind of a high level look citywide and then we'll dig into that just a little bit more detail as we get into specific funds. Then we'll talk general fund, water fund, and then other funds that are smaller funds. If they have significant impact, then we'll talk about them in detail. Otherwise, they'll be a line item. And again, I can answer questions about those specifically if need be. And then we'll just kind of wrap up the presentation for questions. Your calendar, again, this is the same one you see every month at Financial Report. However, so here, we're here on the 9th. The 23rd will be the first reading of the budget and tax rate ordinance. And then on the 13th will be the second reading. So tonight at council, we'll be asking for action on the proposed tax rate to set that rate so that we can do the publications and things like that for the ordinance. Final budget document will be completed after we finish year end because we'll need those year end numbers to give you some estimates, probably mid-November to early December. But as soon as we can, after year end close, we'll start pulling those final numbers and getting you a completed document that will have year end '22 numbers in there as well for comparison. Okay. Thank you, Martin. Okay, so you guys know the budget is really a year-long process. So as soon as we wrap this one up, we will go into some long-term planning meetings with our larger departments, specifically asset replacement, police and fire, parks, those, the, the bigger departments that have larger expenditures so that we're prepared for what might be coming next year. So we won't stop this once this gets initiated. Kind of February is really where we start kicking off with council and, and talking to you about some bigger priorities and those kind of things, estimating revenues. Kim and her team will start estimating what personnel costs are going to be and those things. And then later in the month, departments will start putting in their specific requests and we'll work through all of that. So it's a long process that we go through and we take it very seriously. So we're excited to be here and kind of present the fruits of our labor, I guess, for the last several months. So I'm happy to answer any questions as we go through this process. Okay, quick look at current economy. So we keep talking about inflation and it is a huge factor, I know, in our personal lives and also here for us at the city. Last year in July was 5.4%, so it's up 9.1% at the end of June. I haven't seen the end of July's numbers yet. Largest increase since 1981, which we continue to talk about. Did get some other information, just a little bit deeper. So food costs, about 10 and a half percent that we're seeing. I think we're all seeing that, 70% in fuel. Now fuel, you can see my little gas buddy chart here that I keep showing you. It has gone down just a little bit. Not significant enough that we were willing to say, hey, let's take a chance, you know, and reduce that fuel cost in the budget. But we are watching that to see, you know, what happens over the next couple of weeks to a month. So petroleum products directly related to fuel costs. So we're seeing big increases on those, specifically chemicals, pipe meters and those kind of things. 15 to 40% in some cases.
So Julie, you're showing us this chart. So are you telling us that these percentages are used in calculating this budget? Or are you just giving us an overall picture of the market and why some of these will increase? Or are you, should I look at this as how much the budget's going to increase?
Not necessarily. So obviously, we use this information as we were preparing the budget, as we get new information when we go along, because it's changed so much over the last few months. But I will tell you that departments, knowing these kind of things and watching what was happening specifically starting off with fuel, the, the budget's tight. I mean, we, they really went in and tightened the belt and said, okay, need versus want, and really looked at places they could trim so that perhaps we could get ahead or better than budget on some of these inflationary numbers. So for example, I'm not going to tell you the water fund's going up 15%. However, some of the things we're buying are going up 15%. But we've been somewhat proactive in that. And if we needed to increase our inventory, for example, this year so that we knew we could get some things at a little bit better price now that we've seen, received notification of increases because we're seeing a lot of that from vendors, that, hey, in the next couple of weeks, you're going to see this coming. We've tried to be kind of proactive in that area. So I would say it's kind of a mixed bag of how we came to the numbers that we came to with the best information that we have.
Okay, that's, I just wanted to be clear on that. Thank you.
This is just to give you a little bit of an estimation of things that we're specifically looking at. Some that you can relate to at home and some that are affecting us directly. So fire truck, for example, I'm sorry, ambulance, for example. We haven't received the ambulance that we have in the '22 budget. And you know, we've already pre-ordered the one for the '23 budget. But they're estimating those 18 to 24-month wait time on ambulances right now. So I know Chief Maloney and his team are staying on top of that really closely because that's definitely a need when it comes to replacing that. So meter boxes, so you can see on the water side, for example, we're trying to order meter boxes and lids right now. And we're nine to 12 months out on meter boxes and lids, so.
So when you order these things, it's not a price lock from when you place the order, or it is?
Some companies it is and some it isn't. So, you know, if you order like chemicals and those kind of things, it's typically not. They'll tell us this is today's price, but they're going to price it based on what they're paying for it when they get it. So if there's an increase by the time we get it, then we have to make that decision at that time. So the ambulance, for example, there's a good chance that what we have in the budget for '22 won't be locked in at that '22 price. Is that correct? Because they haven't even built those yet. So they're basing it on what their costs are and then passing those along. And a lot of it does have to do with fuel because we're seeing so much delivery and freight increase. And I think they're building that in, in most of those cases, so.
So not only are we dealing with current inflation, we're dealing with past, well, in past that we haven't received yet.
That's correct. So there's a good chance. And we'll be watching that, you know, specifically in our asset replacement funds and just watching as those bigger ticket items come in. And we'll have to modify and make adjustments as we go along, so. But just want to give you a little bit of, of things there. So we have not received any vehicles yet that we've ordered in fiscal year '22. I take that back. We do have three PD vehicles that are being outfitted right now, but they're saying three to four month timeframe for upfitting. So hopefully, we'll be receiving a lot of vehicles in 2023, but we're not crossing our fingers. Those are locked in because we've already paid for those. And we're just paying for the upfitting right now. So just a lot of moving parts on those bigger ticket items because of supply chain. Okay, we talked a little bit about this. I wanted to just give you a little bit of information on the Fed. So it's interesting when we talk about the Fed raising the rate half a percent or, you know, 75 basis points, that we are technically at a pretty historical low. So I just wanted to show you kind of some history with the Fed. And so, you know, we are thinking 2.25 is high and they are expected to do another increase. I would expect to see that again before the end of this year, just to kind of battle the inflation. But in 1980, '81, the Fed was at 20%. So just to kind of give, you know, a little bit of background. And then, you know, dropped down to 8% and flattened out zero through 2008, 2009, obviously. And then has really stayed down there in those low marks for quite a while through the pandemic and those kind of things. So I feel like they, you know, they're doing what they can to help us battle inflation. But, you know, I just wanted to point out that we're not at a really high, you know, Fed rate right now, just based on history. And I gave you this chart and one of the reasons I wanted to print it is because I knew it was going to be really hard to see up here. But this just kind of, you know, exemplifies what I said. So, you know, you can see it flatten, you know, after kind of 1990 goes down a little bit and then 2008 essentially goes to zero. So just kind of wanted to show you a little bit of a trend there on the Fed. Okay, labor issues, you know, we've talked about that through the mid-year council-approved strategic market adjustments and also through the cost of living. We've talked a lot about how the labor shortage is affecting us here at the city and really, I think, locally and statewide. I think everyone who has a business is feeling that right now. I will say that the, the adjustments that were done specifically to public safety have helped. We're pretty close to being near full staff in those areas, which is good news. We haven't seen that in a long time, but I know both chiefs are working really hard to get that done. So in '23, we will see full year impacts of those adjustments. So that is part of the increase in labor. And when I show you increases, I'm comparing to '22's original budget just so that you can tell what the gap is. And if there's something significant difference between original and current, then I'll let you know what that impact is. Recruitment retention issues, which we've talked about local and statewide. Housing shortages and then commuters are obviously paying more for fuel. So multiple reasons why we have. Now, KDC gave a report a couple of weeks ago that we are back at pre-pandemic unemployment levels. And so that's might be true, but remember, that's only based on people who are actually looking for a job. So, you know, there's no way to really put a number on that other than to quantify the shortages that we see in our, in our environment and our local community. This, I wanted to just bring out, I read an article the other day that I thought was interesting about dealing with uncertainty. And I think, you know, we're kind of past saying what's normal because we don't know anymore. But I think it really does kind of go hand in hand with a regular budget year because we have to deal with uncertainty in the budget because it is projections, it is estimations. It's using data that we have with the best information we have to, you know, put together something that we think is going to work a year from now. And so I just thought this was really interesting that, you know, you have to acknowledge it and not be, just sit back and say, well, this is happening and we're just going to ignore that. So, you know, I think we're pretty proactive in dealing with things, making a what-if plan and figuring out how to deal with challenges as they come. And I think we've, we've had our fair share. And I think that we've come out really strong in the last few years fiscally as far as year end. So I just thought this was interesting, wanted to share it. The quote that Kevin Eckenberry gave was the only time we have 2020 vision is looking backwards. And I think that's true because we can do the best we can to look and see what's going to happen. We just, we don't know until after the fact. So just know we've taken all those things into consideration as we've put this together for you guys so that we can bring the best information that we have.
All right, I'm going to pop in here real quick and give Julie a short break. We're going to talk about really our budget themes, right? And so Julie did a great preface talking about where we're at on the macro scale and a lot of the different cost pressures. And this has certainly been a budget that we have prepared this year that is a budget that is really, we've been internally, the, the sub-theme has been kind of a hold the line as far as service levels. Obviously, we've seen pro, cost pressures in a number of different fronts because of that global economic factors. But we've done everything we can, and our departments have done everything we can to maintain existing high-quality service levels even despite those cost pressures and even despite labor pressures. So I wanted to go back a little bit in retrospect and talk about what we've accomplished in this last fiscal year because I think it lends credence to our theme for this year, which is building momentum. Last year, as you probably recall, our theme was moving forward. We were moving forward out of several austere years where we were seeing budget cuts. We were seeing major personnel cuts. We were seeing, and despite those elements and those challenges at that time, throughout the pandemic that our community was also facing, we moved forward. We moved forward with the goals that the community had set with Kerrville 2050. We'll talk about some of those, and those are all highlighted within here. We moved forward with the bond election for public safety facility, major initiative. Public safety being the number one priority identified within Kerrville 2050. Public safety communication and getting the equipment and the tools that those public safety professionals need day in and day out to be able to do their jobs. Street reconstruction and street maintenance, major elements, high priority for our, our city and our community. Consistently ranked highly in the survey works. We did multimillion dollars of both reconstruction efforts as well as maintenance efforts internally within our operations. Water supply, I think we all recognize how critical that is this summer. This community's been investing for decades in water supply, most recently exemplified with the Loop 534 Ellen Burt your well project. Water wastewater master plan, as you all know, we just delivered that to you all in a workshop here in the last couple of weeks. Identified, again, a range of improvements and enhancements that need to be made over the next 30 years. But that's, that's how Kerrville 2050 has shown us. We plan our work and then we work our plan, right? And so again, it's a major planning initiative so that way we can continue to be prepared. This community can continue to be prepared for challenges well into the future. We made significant progress on drainage, although it clearly hasn't rained in a while. So it's been good to go get those projects done, but eventually it will. And this community will be better prepared for it. Again, great planning work on the Parks and Recreation Master Plan as well as launching off on the Singing Wind Park Master Planning Effort. That should be accomplished by the end of this fiscal year. Just wrapped up the Tranquility Island, Light the Island project. Made numerous grant-initiated Kerrville Sports Complex improvements. We did Carver Park improvements related to that area development plan in the Doyle area. Library HVAC and lighting improvements, including the library ramp that now connects downtown and the River Trail to the library campus. We've made improvements at Lehman Dog Park. Economic development, it's been a huge effort for us, as you all know. We have success. We just actually got notified this weekend that Kildare Mountain Manufacturing, they've got 60 employees right here in Kerrville now over the course of this last year that they've been employing. And they've got a building permit and a construction loan to now move forward with their facility at Airport Commerce Loop. So very exciting news on that front, continuing to grow our, our regional economy, which again, helps pull that taxpayer burden off of our residential tax base. And then, of course, our, our housing issues, very well articulated within Kerrville 2050. We know that we can't get out of those on our own. Those have to be through partnerships, public-private partnerships. We embarked in those and you've got dirt churning off Loop 534 with Lennar Homes. We continue to progress various housing initiatives with other potential partners out there. And I think those will continue to come to fruition, but we've put major effort and time and energy, staff energy into that. And then last, and, and certainly one of the most important, we are a, a labor-based industry. We are a people-based industry. The vast majority of our costs are personnel costs. And, and absolutely, they're seeing the, the pain that, that those inflationary factors are seeing when our folks go home and they're buying bread for their family, right? And so this council took a very wise move, in my opinion, in making some strategic market and COLA personnel adjustments mid-year so that we, we could maintain our competitiveness within the marketplace. And so we would have folks in the jobs that you all have authorized so we can make sure that they're out there patrolling the streets and picking folks up in ambulances and providing the good work day in and day out that you've asked us to do. So again, we moved forward and now we're building momentum. We build a priority-based budget and that prior, those priorities are, are built into this year's fiscal '23 budget. And I'm not going to go through every line in here, but I'm going to go through the, the key points because these are translated really from right after you all were elected and your council retreat and the goals that you all set and then translated through further input that you provided through multiple workshops throughout the summer. And that, we, we mirror those and we match those up with the resources that we have in a very financially sustainable way. And that's really what is presented to you today. So some key initiatives, key priorities coming out of Kerrville 2050 and prioritized by you. Community and neighborhood character slash placemaking. Right now, we have a budgeted for an update to the Kerrville 2050 Comprehensive Plan. That does look at several strategic catalyst areas that you asked us to look at, including the medical district, the areas around Nimitz Lake and areas around Shriner University and Legion. Looking at various provisions to planning and development codes and ordinances, continuing to update those and building upon the progress that you all have done through updating the zoning code, updating the subdivision ordinance, looking at things like right-of-way management, floodplain management, night-friendly lighting, tree preservation, et cetera. Downtown revitalization, continuing, we talked about those library improvements and other pieces that we have moved forward in this last fiscal year, continuing to invest in infrastructure downtown to be able to grow that economy, which is the heart of Kerrville. Continued implementation of that vision set forth by the Kerrville Urban Trail System and Clay Street South. Design and construction, of course, a part of the Hills Heritage Center. And continuing to look at the possibilities for downtown hotel. And then just consistent economic development evaluation of the River Trail extension downtown. Economic development, again, we talked about regional retail recruitment. That is very much within the swim lane of the city, different than KDC, of course. Continuing to support KDC in their efforts to build local workforce and again, be able to do that recruitment efforts for those quality primary jobs. Housing, we talked about that before. Those efforts will continue. They're ensuing right now and given our significant need, they're, they're going to ensue for quite a bit of time. Mobility and transportation, continuing to look at funding for street maintenance and ways that we can continue to enhance that. This budget does enhance street maintenance funding per the priorities that our community has asked us to do. And based off, again, planning work that you all did several years ago in looking at the pavement management plan and the increases to that funding over time. It also looks at a, a reanalysis of that pavement management plan this year after we have now done several years and really are kind of coming at the end of our reconstruction funding efforts. Again, looking at investment in sidewalks and other multimodal opportunities for transportation. Parks and recreation, open space and river. We talked again about the master planning efforts that occurred this year. Really looking at ways that we can leverage funding that may be out there and, and ways that we can bring those ideas and those desires that were put into those master plans into fruition. Public facilities and services, perhaps the most important one. Public facilities and services, uh, perhaps the most important one, uh, that, uh, we will, uh, move forward, uh, for in this next upcoming year. Again, is the development now of that multi-departmental public safety complex. Uh, but also launching off on, uh, facility master planning efforts, uh, really across our operations. Uh, and so I think, uh, it was definitely, uh, uh, an effort and an emphasis of this council over the last few months to make sure that we are looking at all of those assets in a long-term fashion, uh, because they do, they have a useful life, they don't last forever. Uh, and you've got to make continual reinvestments, uh, and sometimes they just come to the end of their useful life. And so trying to, uh, build out that planning effort so that we don't have surprises, uh, as frequently in, in the future. Water and wastewater and drainage, again, as you all know, uh, significant planning efforts on the master plan. Uh, and so looking at, uh, funding evaluation for the implementation, uh, of that plan, continued implementation of that plan, uh, as the, the city continues to make significant investments, uh, in water and wastewater infrastructure. Uh, again, it's, uh, continued implementation of the city's long-range water supply plan. We talked about Loop 534 well, uh, but there are a number of other initiatives that were identified, uh, to, uh, continue to shore up water resources over the next hundred years, uh, for this community to be able to thrive. Uh, and then looking at, uh, again, stormwater drainage, uh, continues to be a priority for this community. And building resilience, we had several winter storms that were those challenges, uh, that we had to face in addition to the other, uh, pandemic and, and other economic-related challenges. And so, uh, fortunately, we have spent staff resources to be able to leverage significant multi-million dollar, uh, state grant opportunities, uh, to be, to provide for a more resilient, uh, water, uh, and wastewater system in those, uh, storm events in the future. So with that, I'd be happy to answer any questions, I'm gonna turn it back over to Julie. Okay?
Yeah, Flotter?
Okay, okay. Alright, so we're gonna do, uh, just a high-level citywide, uh, budget summary first before we get into specifics just so you can kind of see how everything affects the entire, uh, city.
So, I'll get on my right page here.
Go back a page, I wanna see, I wanna see some famous people that are in this picture, oh yeah.
So, I think it, we kind of picked out some various pictures, I think it's interesting, important to know kind of what city staff do for the community so not just show up for work, but are investing, you know, from a volunteer standpoint too.
Oh, oh, the new one. Uh, sorry, I was talking, I was talking to the celebrity that's in the middle picture there.
Oh, okay, front and center, no, you're good. Okay, so just looking at the voters, um, voter-approved increase of property tax rate, I know we've talked about this back all the way to January, um, with the impacts of the proposed bond. Uh, so moving our property tax rate from 5093 in fiscal year '22 to 5752 in fiscal year '23. Um, and we'll talk about that in a lot more detail here in a minute. Uh, sales tax revenue, um, budgeted at 6% higher than what we estimate '22 to be and we're still on track with those estimations, um, and feel real comfortable with where '22 is going to end. An increase in EMS revenues, we used, uh, historical data here, um, there's some rate increases that are coming that are going to be allowed, uh, for them and, um, also a CPI increase to Kirk County EMS contract, which isn't real significant, but when you add them all together, it's, it's pretty significant. Um, increased water fund revenues, uh, due to, uh, rate and fee increases, and really this is in response to operational costs and assets. So, this is a business-type fund, so it can only be supported through those revenue sources. So, uh, we can't transfer money to the water fund, uh, to support regular operations. Increase in hot tax, uh, increase in grant, uh, revenue relating specifically to police, but also some other grants.
Oh, okay, I have, I always ask the same question, so I'm gonna ask it again, so maybe it'll hold in my memory this time. I agree with and understand that we budget conservatively on sales tax revenue and I, and I think that's the smart thing to do. But, uh, also recognize since my time on council, fortunately, we've been able to, um, adjust the budget and a lot of, partially due to, um, bringing in more sales tax than anticipated in the budget. So, my question is, um, what number did we start our last fiscal year budget with consideration of the end?
We've got a whole sales tax slide with some graphical pieces that I think will answer your question.
Alright, perfect.
It's a little further along in the revenue piece.
Okay.
Right, definitely a lot more detail on that and kind of what considerations went into that.
Sure.
Um, and good question, because we do have that conversation quite often here and also at EIC. Alright, increases in personnel, I know EA spoke to this a little bit, um, but again, full impact, um, of those '22 mid-year adjustments that were made. We're averaging about a 3% merit increase for all general government employees, keep in mind, those are all, um, I guess what I would call non-commission and not public safety employees, so that includes all funds, um, just to be clear, water fund employees are also considered general government employees. Uh, step plan increases for anyone eligible in this fiscal year for public safety, um, employees, uh, based on their, uh, step plan. And, uh, group insurance is going up 5%, so that's, um, that's kind of significant in the overall personnel cost. However, I will say, we started out much higher than that and so, uh, Kim and her team were able to negotiate that down, as y'all know. Um, increase in street maintenance funding, which we do, um, each year based on our pavement, uh, planning. And as EA spoke to a little bit earlier, um, obvious increase in supply and maintenance costs, which we'll talk about in more detail. Um, we did get notification, I think we talked about it last, uh, council meeting, that liability insurance and workers' comp insurance are going up significantly. I think workers' comp was 10.4% or something increase. Um, I don't remember the exact percent on liability, but it was, it was significant, um, to all funds. Um, increase in capital specifically related to asset replacement, as we continue to visit about in workshops. And an increase in capital projects primarily due to, uh, the public safety facility, so when you see that dollar amount, we'll talk through that just a little bit. Yeah, looking at citywide revenue sources here, so property tax, uh, services, so that's going to be EMS, uh, water services, um, solid waste and some recreation in there in that service category and sales tax, 64.9% of our revenues. So, um, we are being a little bit more aggressive on sales tax this year than we have in the past and, and we'll talk about that. But, kind of letting it fill the gap a little bit and give, um, property tax a little bit of a, a break. So last year, um, and I'll get into this in the general fund, telling you exactly what percentages of each were budgeted last year compared to this year on that. Okay, this is citywide revenues by fund, so you can see, um, kind of what funds are bringing in the most money. Um, general fund at 50.4%, um, water at 20.9, so proposed revenues of $70.1 million. Um, general fund and water fund are 71% of that, um, with the smaller funds falling in after that at smaller percentages. General and water are both, uh, balanced, um, with the proposal that we have in front of you today, um, and do meet the reserve policy requirements for fund balances, um, and debt, debt reserve. This is expenditures by fund, so again, citywide, um, so proposed expenditures of 99.1 million. I don't want that to get confusing when you look at the 70.1 in revenue, so keep in mind that we're going to receive $45 million this year for capital projects, so that won't be booked as revenue next year. So, we're going to spend the money next year, but we're getting it this year. So, it, you know, we'll have larger expenses than we do revenues. Also, not to be confusing, but we do have transfers in and transfers out that you'll see within each fund, so when we do that, for financial reasons, we have to count that as an expense for one fund and a revenue for another. So, when you net those funds or remove those funds from our total expenses, our total expenses are cash 90.1. Um, and again, 45 million of that, I think we have 20, about $20 million budgeted for public safety, um, in fiscal year '23, if I'm not mistaken. Uh, general fund, water fund and capital projects, uh, 78.3%, um, again with capital projects being 21% in fiscal year '23. See, so expenses by category just gives you a little bit different look, obviously, as EA spoke to earlier, personnel is our largest expense. So, citywide, 30.8% of our expenses are related to personnel. Uh, 52% of that personnel specifically dedicated to public safety. Uh, keeping in mind that, that are, those are those departments specifically and don't include anyone else who might, uh, have public safety-related, um, duties. So, um, IT, finance, legal, um, HR and admin, any of that stuff is not calculated into that 52%. So, just something, just something to note, that number is probably quite a bit bigger than if we were to get really granular and look at how much time, uh, those things are from a diversification. Okay, I wanted to go ahead and do a property tax overview because I knew there may be some questions, uh, related to the bond and so just look at it a little bit closer. Um, so again, uh, proposing, uh, tax rate of .5792, um, that is an increase of a little more than six cents, um, over fiscal year '22. Um, the debt or the INS portion is the part that increased, so going from, uh, a little over seven cents to right at 14 cents, um, specifically for public safety, that's the difference there, and I'll give you some dollars related to that in a moment. So that debt is voter-approved, as you know, um, back from the May election and we'll be bringing to you more information as we get ready to post those bonds for sale and then, um, ask for authorization to sell those bonds. Uh, maintenance and operation portion or the M and O rate is decreasing, so .4358 in fiscal year '22, um, .4341 in fiscal year '23. And again, um, that is in response to property valuations, when properties go up, typically, your tax rate is going to go down, um, to kind of, you know, the revenue's going to change just based on valuations and we recognize that. Um, overall increase in property tax revenue, and again, this comes from the first page of your, uh, budget book. Uh, 2.3 million or almost 2.4 million there, um, in detail, 1.7 million of that is dedicated to public safety. And just to give you a little bit of, uh, background here, money from existing properties is 467,000. That compares to fiscal year '22, which was 402,000, so not a huge differential there, um, considering the inflationary things that we're seeing now. Um, on the new properties, so new property meaning new vertical property or major improvements to an existing structure, 199,000 this year, uh, compared to 147,000 last year. So, when you look at general fund dollars, not a big impact there compared to the majority of it being on the debt side.
Just to clarify, the proposed tax rate is .5752, correct?
Yes, I think you're correct, sorry about that, that's a typo. You're, you're, you're right, I'll check that in the resolution.
Oh, yeah.
Clarify for the record.
Yes, no, you are absolutely correct, sorry about that.
Watching or listening or looking?
See, you were reading.
Good, go ahead.
Okay, no problem. Okay, I gave you this, um, just an update to what we've kind of talked about, uh, since we did the public safety, uh, bond committee meetings. Just looking at impact, uh, to property owners. So, Kirk had its valuations this year, did make a difference in our average residential value. So you can see that went from 250 to 300 from '21 tax year to '22 tax year. Um, and then again, did the impact there for you, so you can see the net, um, per, uh, $50,000 increment is what I did. So, you can kind of follow that through and see what the impact, so you can see the M and O rate decreasing. Um, we understand that even though it's a net negative, if your property valuation changed, there's a likelihood you, that you're not going to see a negative on your property tax. I just wanted to show you just for, for presentation purposes, what that looks like, um, per range there. So, really, um, about in line, uh, with what we proposed back in January or just a few dollars less. So, if everything goes right and we're able to sell the bonds where we want, um, we feel like that's, that's a pretty solid number. Some information on new property here, so for fiscal year '23, as we talked about a minute ago, 199,000 of revenue in new, uh, property value. So that's things that we haven't seen on the roll before, um, new construction or major modifications to existing property. And I apologize for not getting you the percentages on the bottom, I noticed that earlier, but this just gives you new value by category. So that single-family is 68%, um, and the multifamily is 20%, uh, with commercial being 10%. So, um, I can get you those, those numbers later, um, if you would like them, but I just apologize for not getting those on the graph.
Can you just say it one more time to suck it down?
Yes, 68% on residential, 20% on multifamily and 10% on commercial.
This is other, this has also been one of the big drivers for seeing that average, uh, household, uh, actually increase. The vast majority of, again, the new growth has been, like, single-family as indicated in this chart. Those single-family homes, as we well know, since we're tracking housing so closely, are on the upper end of the spectrum. Uh, and so they're, they're driving that average up.
Yeah, and I, way back, way back 15 years ago, I remember talking in leadership Kirk County and I just remember a presentation and, and it's probably changed over time, but the goal would be to have closer to a 50/50 commercial residential, I mean, that would be really, what, which is one of the reasons we really want to recruit that, that retail development to help offset those costs to the residential owners.
Yeah, and again, this is just new value, it's not the overall tax base, but yes, you're right, that, that is a big part of our economic strategy.
But I mean, we're basically saying that our new value is not coming from primarily commercial.
That's right, not over this last year anyway.
Yeah.
So, this next one is just related to frozen property taxes and I know we talk about this quite a bit. Just to give you an idea, so revenue loss, if we were to fully tax those frozen properties, um, about $4.6 million is, is what we give up there.
That number just goes up every year.
Yes, it does, it's gone up, last year it was 29%, just a hair over 29, and this year it's a solid 30. Okay, any questions on that summary section so far? I'll give you some more pictures.
Go back one slide. A new loss, so you, we are taking $4.6 million out of the taxable value that we would be getting otherwise.
Correct.
The taxable collections.
Taxable collections, yes.
Not just the overall value, this is, this is.
What we collect.
If we did not have a senior tax freeze, the city would be potentially.
Collecting.
Collecting.
Collecting that much more.
Collecting that much more.
Yes, correct.
Okay.
Just to put into perspective.
Alright.
Okay, any questions over what we've talked about so far?
Bragger.
We're getting close over here.
Yeah, we are.
Okay, so we're gonna move into, um, the general fund, again, um, operationally, uh, pretty tight. We'll talk about the bigger, uh, ticket items here and answer questions. So, looking at the general fund specifically, uh, revenue sources, uh, total revenue of 35.4 million. Uh, property tax and sales tax, 62.1%. So, uh, earlier I mentioned the split on property and sales tax. So, sales tax for FY '23 budgeted at 29.8% of revenue, fiscal year '22, it was 28.3, so picked up about a percent there on sales tax and property tax, uh, last year 35.2 and this year 32.3. So, we're picking up some revenue sources from some other areas, uh, where we can, um, try to give, you know, as much relief there as, as we can. But at the end of the day, I mean, operations are operations and it's just really, it's hard to dig into those anymore, knowing what we know right now about the economy. Specifically, looking at property tax, uh, sales tax and service revenues here, so property tax, 6.6% increase. But keep in mind, this includes current property tax collections and prior year, so anything that is already owed. We budget that based on historical data because there's really no way for us to budget that any more solid than that. Um, but we've been right on track with that over the past few years. Um, the, the prior year, uh, numbers are not part of the tax rate calculation. So if you just look at current year, it's 6% um, higher in revenue than it was last year in the general fund. Sales tax up 12.8% um, compared to what we budgeted last year in the original budget. Again, we added $600,000 to that mid-year. Um, we feel pretty strong that we're going to exceed sales tax by more than 500,000 in that year-end. So, again, last year we budgeted about 3% over what we thought fiscal year '21 was gonna end the year. Um, ended up coming back way better than that, so this year we're putting 6%, um, still being conservative, given we have a 9.1% inflation. You know, what are those price increases doing to that sales tax number? Is a lot of it inflation? Uh, consumers are shopping less, so, or we see in the increase based on prices. So, so many factors there that it's just really hard to put any more weight, in my opinion, on property tax. Of course, I mean, that would be, uh, your discretion if that's something you wanted to look into further. Um, I would recommend waiting a little bit longer just to see, we can always amend that later, um, if we need to. But, um, that, I feel like that's a conservative but attainable.
Okay, so, you, you just said this, but I just want to be clear. We based our last year's budget on a 3% increase over the actuals of the prior year.
Well, where we thought the actuals would be, um, which if you remember, October, November came in higher. So actually, our '23 budget ended up being about the same as our '21 budget because October, November, which would be for August and September, came in substantially higher than we anticipated.
Okay, so anticipated though, stick with anticipated then.
Yeah, we really try to project out where we think the year is going to end and then add to that, instead of using the budget as a base because we're exceeding budget, so if we did a 6% better than budget, we're already better than that.
So, the projected or anticipated, best of our ability, where we think the numbers will land. We're basing that on a 6% increase this year and prior was 3%.
That's right.
Okay.
Um, and, and, you know, we won't know that true number until November.
Sure, but the idea is.
Sure, if you look at previous years and what's happened and kind of do some analysis. Sure. If you look at previous years and what's happened and kind of do some analysis to see where we think things might end, we give our best judgment to that and then add six percent to it so that we're not basing it on last year's budget. So since it's performing better, we've been double digits. This past month was, you know, nine and a half, close to ten. So, you know, with that and inflation being nine, it makes you, you know, just really take back, step back and look and say, what, what's driving that and just digging into those individual businesses as much as we can. But what I'll tell you is our top five, that we always say are thirty percent of our revenue, are performing well. And so we base a lot on what's going on with those retailers that are the, the heaviest used.
Okay.
So service revenues, we talked a little bit about this in last council meeting, directly related to an increase in EMS revenues. So in fiscal year nineteen, with the onset of COVID, we had a shortfall in EMS revenue. So going into budget for twenty-twenty, or I'm sorry, that would be twenty-twenty, twenty-one and twenty-two, we kind of kept EMS flat because COVID had a major impact on, on EMS. And twenty-one was better than we anticipated, and twenty-two so far is tracking in line volumetrically with twenty-one. So we take those historical numbers, we're using those to budget and not what we've used to budget prior year because it's a more realistic number. And then, as we said, there's going to be some rate increases that Chief Maloney is going to be allowed to make within, I don't know all the details of that, but what they're allowed to make within the ambulance resources that will affect that a little bit, too. So you're seeing what's compared to fiscal year twenty-two's original budget there. We have not amended the revenues there, but we're watching that monthly, and it's tracking just the same as twenty-one did. So we feel comfortable with that. Intergovernmental revenue, twelve point eight percent up. So we talked about a CPI increase with Kirk County EMS contract. That's like four and a half percent, I believe. Then we'll also have an increase in revenue from KISD. And I know you guys are familiar with the new school resource officer agreement that we just did, adding two officers. So that is built in here as a revenue, but keep in mind, you'll also see the offsetting expense. So we will assume the cost for those officers, and then KISD will reimburse us at five-sixths of the cost, including some amortized, amortized equipment and things like that that we haven't recruited before.
I have a question about that. Is there any plans to ultimately get a officer at each and every school?
It's something we're working with KISD on. They're going to evaluate going forward. We're going to move forward with the two this year, and then we're going to look at it, you know, over the ensuing years. It is a multi-year agreement, but certainly that agreement could be amended and potentially expanded in the future if that's something that they desire to, to, to do.
Okay.
We're, we're working really closely with KISD, make sure our kids are safe.
Yeah, I know Chief McCall and his teams are doing evaluations of campuses and those things.
I kind of assumed that you were using two resource officers instead of four because of the vacancy in the department. And if there's no vacancy, could we look at increasing two more? So everybody's protected.
Again, we're looking at them closely, taking, taking their lead on, on how they want to, you know, put, allocate their resources. They're looking at a number of other enhancements as well, both to the campuses, physical infrastructure. There, we're in the process of tying all of their cameras and technology into our central elements to be able to monitor that. So there's a number of other things other than just bodies on campus. But it is absolutely something we're continuing to look at.
Okay.
Again, looking at property tax just from the general fund side, and I think this might answer a few questions from earlier. So maintenance and operation rate decrease, as we talked about earlier, with the current tax for the general fund increasing six percent. So you can see the chart there that kind of tracks revenue, the last two being, so you'll see revenue to budget, basically. Then fiscal year twenty-two, you can see we're tracking right at a hundred percent collections, which is really good. We budget a ninety-eight percent collection just for those unknowns from prior years. And, you know, depending on the economy, sometimes drives property tax revenues up or down.
Okay, on your two bullet points, the first one, you're talking about maintenance and operations, and I understand that decrease. And then you're talking about property tax revenue. Now you're including all revenue. You're not breaking it out at that point. You're not, we're not, it's, that six percent also encompasses the part of the INS that, that is going up. Or the six percent specifically relates to our increase in the M and O?
It's both, actually. So yes, to answer your question, it's overall property tax of six point six percent. Six percent when you only deal with the general fund portion, and I may have to go back and look at that because maybe I, I'll go back and look at that because the overall.
I just want to be clear on the percentage.
Right, right.
Well, in the budget book, it says six point six percent compared to for the general fund.
Right, right. And on the general fund, too.
I think what's important is to really look at the graphical piece here over time. You can see the, the linear nature of this revenue source as compared to CPI, which we know is asymptotic, at least recently, and also in comparison to the graph that we looked at in relation to frozen taxes, which has also been asymptotic. And so based off, you know, state legislature and really the handcuffs that they've now put on this revenue source, it's a, it's a constraint in being able to reliably utilize this, which is our most stable revenue source, to be able to provide services. It just, it's not, it does not keep up with the increases, the price increases that we've seen to be able to deliver services. So without being able, without cutting services, we're having to look more heavily at other revenue sources.
I'll verify that just to be sure, but she's looking at the fund summary right now. But it is six percent of current taxes in the general fund, six point six when you calculate prior year in penalties and interest, which is not in the tax rate. But I'll double check the citywide, but I feel like that tracks right there. Here's your sales tax graphs we were talking about a minute ago. So I'll give you the one that I show you at monthly updates, just so you can kind of see the trend line there year over year. Just kind of, really unless there's an anomaly, sales tax has trended the same all the way back since, you know, twenty-eighteen. If you look at line over line, just with increases each year. So it's, it's not easy to project, but it's at least easier to look at a trend line and say, you know, we can anticipate, you know, an increase in this month over last month, et cetera. So gives us a little bit different look at that. And then when you look at revenues there on the graph on the left, you can see the brown line is our twenty-twenty-two estimate. So again, I didn't plug the budget there. That's where we estimate that we will be at year-end. And then six percent more than that for the fiscal year twenty-three budgeted.
Are we, are we looking at the percent change? Is that what we're still?
So you can look at both. So that's why I gave you in a couple of different views. So the percent change does look a little wacky, but when you look at that big increase, think about what was going on during that time period with influx of stimulus money. We're in the middle of COVID, and surprisingly, I mean, we know we came out, you know, almost two million dollars better in sales tax revenue during the COVID period than we anticipated we were going to. So it does get a little bit confusing, but when you look at the percent line for twenty-three at six percent and kind of draw a line across to what actuals are, you know, we're hanging right in there around that average each year. So when you take out that big spike and just kind of draw a line, you can kind of see some normalcy through there. And that's kind of what we're looking at. And then also taking the percent increase and taking the trend lines and applying that same kind of factor there. And then, again, we did amend that budget by six hundred thousand dollars, and that did offset the COLA and market adjustments in the general fund. So that, that helped us a lot on expenses. Okay, a few more expenses here. This is by department, so you can see what each department is spending in relation to the entire fund. Again, fifty point six of the overall general fund budget being expended to public safety. Parks and Rec, twelve point nine. Remember that this does include golf for fiscal year twenty-three, and golf does have, golf and parks both have offsetting revenue sources. So a little more than two million dollars there coming in. So more than half of their programs that they offer are paid for with revenue. Gen Ops, so that's going to include anything that doesn't really have a department assigned. So insurance, maybe some professional services, things like that that get put into our Gen Ops budget. And then internal services are lumped together there just because there's so many departments that really are considered service departments that don't have revenue attached to them. So finance, HR, legal, city secretary, those are lumped into that internal service fund there. And then IT, of course, you can see at four point one percent, which we continue to hear that, you know, seventy-five percent of their work is related to public safety as well, so.
So are we going to be able to, I noticed we don't have any revenue line items for any of the departments. Are we going to see those in the final budget?
We can if you want to. We grouped them as fund because really, at the end of the day, they're grouped by fund. So in the very front of the book, they're divided out, and you can see each line item for revenue. But that was a decision we kind of made this year because we thought it was confusing the way it was presented before. I mean, we're happy to break them out, but they're in departmental order, and you can see them labeled as KSP or Parks and Recreation or Golf, that they're labeled in the general fund revenues. There's about four pages of them that we usually put in there. If that's something you'd like to see, we're happy to put that in. It's not hard. But just keep in mind that they're not duplicated, you know, they're in there as a total fund, and then we would be putting them in there departmentally as well. So golf and parks would be the biggest ones there, and EMS from a revenue standpoint.
Okay. I liked seeing it by department. That's just me, though.
That's fine. It's, it's not hard to do.
I, I do like the, the whole grouping so you see it all in one, so I like that. But I also did appreciate and like going through each department and seeing the total revenue and, and expenditures that were made to kind of compare and contrast for those. So that was just me. I don't know how the rest of council feels on that.
That, that's an easy, easy input. We can certainly do that. And I can get that to you beforehand if you like. Just shoot me an email and say, you showed me the revenue by department. I can break them and send them to you like that. That's not a problem.
I'm still taking in a lot of the information.
No, that, that's not a problem at all. Okay, just some detail on expenses here in the general fund. So again, personnel up fourteen and a half percent, then I've kind of just line itemed what is affecting that. Full year impacts that we talked about of the market adjustments, the merit increases we talked about, step plans, health insurance, and then those two additional resource officers. Those are budgeted at part year right now because we don't anticipate having them on October one, but I know that Chief is aggressively recruiting for those positions. So, but again, there's the expense offsetting the revenue that we talked about earlier. So an impact on both sides there. Supplies up fifteen percent, primarily fuel. We keep talking about that. Inflationary impacts of supplies we're seeing across the board, a little different on the general fund than on the water fund just because of the nature of the petroleum-based products that we buy in the water fund. But still, in the past few days, we've gotten new emails from suppliers, specifically sand and gravel, paving, those kind of things that are notifying us of increases. So, you know, we're hoping that we took everything into account, which we think we did, but just watching that really close on what that impact will be. Transfers out up just a little. The biggest thing here is asset replacement. So when we talked back in June and July, we had discussed a seven hundred and fifty thousand transfer to asset replacement just in anticipation of the fire trucks that we're going to have to buy in twenty-five and some other big-ticket items. And then also a two hundred thousand dollar transfer to capital improvement. The two hundred thousand had to come out after we got property tax evaluations in, and we had to bring the asset replacement down from seven fifty to six hundred. So this is really the only flex point that we have that we could utilize to reduce expenses to get the budget balance.
I just want to make sure I understand.
Again, that is a net increase, though, in you all funding those liabilities, those future liabilities by putting more funding in than what we budgeted for last year. Last year we budgeted for forty, this year we're budgeting six hundred. So it is more aggressive in saving in those pay-as-you-go asset replacement programs.
And I'll show you in a minute the asset replacement slide that'll kind of show you the impact to the fund balance and kind of where we're headed. And then as we go into the fall and early spring, we'll be coming back to you with more asset replacement information.
But compared to the original budget, we reduced the general asset replacement by a hundred and fifty thousand.
When we brought that to you in June, yes. We brought it with the proposal of seven fifty.
Budget workshop to now, you've also removed a two hundred thousand dollar transfer to capital improvement.
Correct. So if you remember, mid-year, we did add a little bit of money to both CIP and asset replacement as part of the surplus from fiscal year twenty-one. And then we were going to monitor what the strategic adjustment impacts were to see if we still had some of that surplus left at the end of fiscal year twenty-two to potentially revisit that. So we're still kind of monitoring that and bring that back to you after year-end close and kind of update you on that.
What are we looking at decreasing the two hundred thousand for? What, what was that going towards?
So, and typically, we'll do a transfer to the capital improvement projects, to either a specific project or to undesignated funds to build that fund balance in the event that we have a project come up. I believe that one was going straight to Westminster's, I don't.
No, it was going to the undesignated capital projects. As, as you all know, as we went through that list, we've got, you know, several tens of thousands, tens of millions of dollars of unfunded projects. That two hundred thousand realistically was a drop in the bucket towards going towards that. So it, it was, it was not really designated towards a specific project.
So when you say remove two hundred, that means we're not anticipating any transfer to undesignated?
For general fund capital project. That's correct.
Right. We had proposed it, and so I just wanted you to know that that changed from what we originally talked about. So a little bit more on expenses here by category. Health, safety, sixty-eight percent. Personnel, twenty-five million in total in the general fund. Seventeen million of that is public safety. To put it in perspective, property tax revenue is eleven million. So if that just kind of lets you know, you know, we're not solely relying on property tax for operations. You know, we're using other revenue sources as much as we can. Obviously EMS is in there, and they do have a revenue source that helps with that as well. But, you know, fill in, fill in the backs, gaps with some other revenue sources that we've really tried to capitalize on. Supplies, just to let you know what's in there, gas is in there, office supplies, technology, equipment, uniforms, any safety equipment in the general fund. Also, signs and traffic control devices are, are in supplies unless they're capital. You don't have a lot of capital in the general fund primarily because most of that hits asset replacement or capital projects. Unlike the water fund, that anything we put in the ground new is considered capital. So it's a little bit different from one fund to the next on what we consider capital and how that's expensed. But in the general fund, because capital's kind of sporadic, we try to isolate that into general funds, so asset replacement or CIP, so that we don't have these big wavering operational changes. Just makes it a little more clear to see that. Transfers out there, asset replacement, and then development services. Remember that development services is part of the general fund. But for reporting, reporting purposes, we do break that out so that you can see exactly what's happening in development services. But it is a service-driven division or several divisions, actually. And so when they have a shortfall, then we fill with a transfer. But when, at the end, when we come back together for financial reporting, it's part of the general fund. So that's just for, for transparency there. Okay, we're talking a little bit about capital projects, general asset replacement, and debt. So obviously, our biggest capital project for fiscal year twenty-three is the public safety facility, and we've already kicked off that. Again, we'll be receiving funds from the sale of those bonds September fifteenth. So that's why, again, we'll have revenue this year that we won't have next year. So our expenses are going to exceed our revenue next year because they're booked year to year. Public safety communication system, and we've talked a lot about that. That is in progress now. We'll be finishing up in twenty-three, using ARPA funds for that. The body cameras that we brought a few months ago to council, those are going to be paid for with grant funding and ARPA, so no general fund money there. Westminster Street reconstruction is on the project list, and then some various airport projects. So as you know, we're co-owners of the airport. Operationally, they are balanced, so we're not transferring money to the airport for operations, only for capital expenditures. So they need to do a, a area land use plan, and TechDOT has directed them to do that because until they have that, some of the grant opportunities that come, come up, they can't partake in because they don't have a plan that they can show to TechDOT to show that they align with the grant funding. So that's one. The airport row hangar project, of course, is already budgeted. We've talked about that. But just letting you know, that's going to be hopefully finishing up in twenty-three. And then a fire flow study, which is going to just make sure that they have what they need from a fire flow standpoint to move forward with future projects. And also, we have the cross runway that we'll be working on this year. I don't know if we'll get that completed or not, but we'll definitely bring that back to you when we do capital project updates. So funding sources, the bonds, Series Twenty-Twenty-Two, ARPA, the Office of the Governor grant that we'll be utilizing for KPD body cameras, and then street maintenance carryover that we've transferred from prior years over into CIP. And we do that, just timing of pavement, so timing of paving sometimes doesn't line up with what we have budgeted. So we'll move that over into CIP so that we're ensuring that we're utilizing all the, the funds specifically for paving that were allocated for paving. This year may be a little bit different year because it's been hot and dry, and so they're paving like crazy. If you look around the city, you're going to see a lot of, a lot of work going on right now with streets.
Can we go back? This isn't necessarily a budget-specific question, but more of a, something on the, on one of the image there, the bond project site. Instead of it saying approved by city council, could it say approved by the? Instead of it saying approved by city council, could it say approved by the citizens of Kerrville? Give them more of the credit for passing this bond and going forward with this project. Although I appreciate the intent there for council kind of doing it. They're the ones who really voted for it and, and kind of removing council from it and putting it as a, it's a community effort and it's community-approved kind of thing.
This is still draft, so we'll absolutely take that in consideration.
Just something I noticed, not budget-specific, but yeah.
Was that because it's the project site selection piece? Is that why that, that's like that?
Well, I mean, ultimately you guys still approve the project, right? The, the community approved the funding, right? But anyway, we'll, we'll certainly take that into consideration. Appreciate the sentiment.
Okay, here's the asset replacement information we talked about. So again, we budget asset purchases and leases outside of operation just to limit the variance. And then also, you know, there's the unknown factor. So if we budgeted these departmentally, sometimes that can be difficult if you have emergencies and those kind of things. Again, originally proposed this transfer at seven fifty. We reduced it to six hundred after we received the certified property tax roll. And, you know, on your direction, we've continued to look at pay-as-you-go funding for these assets and had conversations about what we have coming up in the future. A little bit different on the general fund than the water fund side as far as what we purchase with assets. Big ticket, big ticket items here, existing leases. So obviously those payments are gonna, are committed before we start the year off. The ambulance we talked about, purchase of three police vehicles. In the purchase column there, those are gonna be Tahos and it shows you what they're replacing. Apologize, I was gonna put the years and I didn't. Tasers, so we have a five-year replacement program on our tasers. And so each year we buy a portion of tasers to replace ones that we have existing. And then you can see the leases down there at the bottom. So some police vehicles, we did add two with the new SRO program. We're gonna have to add two additional leases. This was better than adding two additional purchases because Tahos are, you know, seventy thousand after being outfitted right now. So this is gonna allow us to stretch that a little bit more in using KISD resources because we're amortizing part of the equipment. It just helps offset some of that lease expense a little bit via that transfer. So you can see there about a million dollars in expenditures. Again, with supply, we don't know how that's gonna happen. We'll be coming back to you to talk about fiscal year twenty-two, probably a budget amendment for things we didn't receive in twenty-two to make sure it's on the books for twenty-three after we close the year and see kind of where we ended up there.
So then would that change the estimated beginning fund balance or is that?
It won't because we can, we assume that if we budgeted it, we're gonna pay for it. So the only thing that would change it slightly is if it were leases that we didn't make payments on because we don't have to rebudget payments we didn't pay out. So it would just essentially push those payments forward.
Okay.
So it won't change it dramatically because the leases aren't that high dollar, but the purchases will change and we have to do that amendment to keep it on the books. So more information on that. So here's overall debt service. And I think it's important to know here that we mapped this out so you can see which fund is paying for what. I know that it's been kind of a source of confusion and can be confusing, but after we add the public safety bonds, we'll be at fifty-seven point four million of property tax paid for debt. So if you back that out, you can see we're only at about ten million right now today. Public safety facility, some streets and drainages in there and then some power generation as we've talked about through the last council meetings. Water fund debt obligation, forty point six million. So again, backed by property taxes for a better rate, kind of like cosigning on a loan, but not paid for with property taxes. So you can see the debt obligations there and then EIC of nine point nine and you can see what their obligations are as well. So that is paid for by 4B sales tax. Okay, and then the little chart on the right just kind of gives you a little bit different look at the dollars that we pay for and what category there. Okay, so again, INS portion was affected heavily by the new issuance. So again, that's estimated at this point. It will not exceed that number. So Anne will work her magic and, and help us get a good bond sale going out there around the fifteenth and then we'll bring that back to you with an actual rate on the twenty-third unless we know something before that. So we're hoping that this is gonna be good news. Little information on SMP. I don't know if you saw the press release, but we did maintain a double A rating. So that indicates extremely high ability to repay debt. And some of the things that SMP said in their report back to us was very strong management and financial management and policies and practices, strong cash balances, which we continue to talk about, our reserves, strong institutional framework and stable finances. So the chart on the right I thought was interesting because this is Texas cities by bond rating. And I know it's kind of hard to see, but even when I blew it up bigger, it was hard. So this goes from BBB and lower all the way up to triple A. So you can see the brown box there is where we fall in the double A. So, you know, we're above the norm, I guess you would say, as far as bond rating. So we're in a good position to be able to get the best rate we can when we go out and sell bonds. Okay, any questions on any of that or prior sections that we need to discuss or answer? Not, I'm gonna turn it over to Trina for a moment. Oh, you're being... Sorry. This is you right here and then Trina.
Just go where I'm told. Water fund. All right, so as we talked about pretty extensively just a few weeks ago throughout the presentation on the master plan, water fund is a separate enterprise fund. It really operates as a business, but it is providing a public good in the sense that it's providing a very essential service, water, a product that we produce through natural resources and then usually have to clarify or treat in some way to be able to provide to our citizens. And then our citizens send it back to us and we treat it again. And then we reuse it sometimes and put it out on irrigation. Sometimes we put it back in the river. And so again, we know this year, perhaps more than many years, how critical water is as we've seen many neighbors that don't have the same resources that Kerrville has invested in for decades and decades. We are seeing extreme drought across Texas, as you all know, and this has been of particular interest for our community. Fortunately, because of the investments that our community has made, we have not had to go into draconian measures as other communities have. One's very close to us, in fact. In fact, even just within this county. And again, it's because of the business investment that our community has made in this business function. So, but that also has created a very complex system. We're very complex because of the topography. We're the largest hill country community located in what I will call the true hill country. I'm not gonna count Austin as hill country. In the true hill country, we have an extensive topography. And that topography, as you all recall from our presentation, means we've got lots of lift stations. We've got lots of pumps. We've got lots of collection stations. And so it makes it very difficult because we just have more infrastructure, quite frankly, than even flatland country like Fredericksburg. We don't think of Fredericksburg, it certainly, it's in the hill country, but it's much, much more flat in their primary area than what Kerrville is. And so they have a totally different system. It's much less complex. They don't even have a treatment facility, quite frankly, because they don't pull out of surface water at all. And so, but that reliability coupled with our topography has created a very complex system that is just more expensive to maintain, quite frankly. Despite that, we have still been at the bottom of the spectrum as far as the rates that we charge our customers. We talked about that with you all as well. And so what we, we did a rate analysis several years ago and that really showed that we were really not on a sustainable tract. We, we had not, the community had not kept up with the increases and the rate structure that it takes to maintain, reliably maintain the, the water system that we have. And so because we have surface water, because we treat runoff, because we have aquifer storage and recovery, because we have groundwater, because this community has invested in all those elements, it, it, it just, it just takes more resource, quite frankly, to be able to maintain that in a, in a responsible way. So we have that water supply for our customers going forward. So with that, we still present to you today with a balanced budget, but it is gonna require some slight rate increases that put us on a more sustainable future to be able to continue to invest in the system overall and our asset replacement and our capital projects. So with that, I'll kick it back over to one of you guys.
Okay, so water fund I am going to discuss and that is enterprise fund and we do manage it as a business and it is currently balanced at fourteen point seven million in revenues and expenditures. We do have some proposals to the utility rates this year. And then with those utility rate changes, we anticipate twenty-three revenues to be about seven point one percent higher than the budget of twenty-two. Those revenues are the water sales, sewer service, reuse cells and then septic disposal. And then we have some cell meters and taps and other infrastructure that goes into the ground that helps feed this fund. And that's pretty much all the revenues that go into operations.
But to be, to be clear, Trina, that when you say seven point one percent, but also anticipates new tap, new water, new water users, new... So seven point one doesn't mean strictly off of collections as they are today. Is that correct?
Right, that's with any fee changes to taps.
So we're not saying snapshot of today, seven point one percent. We're anticipating the growth scenarios with new users and, and things like that as well.
It is. Now, I will say, we, we are fairly conservative on growth in new users. Really, for the most part, for tap fees and other elements, we really, it, it, it's cost in, cost out, right? There's, there's no, we try to get to full cost recovery, but the reality is it's not a major revenue source for us. And so we, we don't bank on a lot of growth within the water fund.
Okay.
A lot of it is off the services provided, yes.
That's correct.
Okay, and with these revenues, more revenues, we anticipate being able to transfer out to asset replacement five hundred thousand compared to the three hundred thousand we budgeted in fiscal year twenty-two or did so in twenty-two. We are gonna go in a little bit more detail about asset replacement in a couple of slides just to look at fund balances and what our needs are.
And this is readily based off of council feedback from the workshop. You all said, hey, we need to be stronger in asset replacement. We need to be putting more in the savings account for that. We don't feel comfortable with the things that we had the forecast, the long-term forecast. And so these rates have been produced directly to achieve that goal.
Okay, so your water revenues are fourteen point seven million. Of those water cells, including the reused water, contribute forty-eight percent, forty-eight and a half percent of those revenues. And then sewer follows behind at forty-four percent. You have in your other category, the septic waste disposal fees and installation of the new meters and stuff. So smaller items. Onto water and sewers expenditures. So personnel is still the largest category here in the water fund. This does take into account the full year impact of the COLA and the strategic market adjustments that we did mid-year, so at a full, full year's cost. And then once again, all general government employees, including water personnel, generally get about a three percent merit increase. And then also taken into account the increase in the health insurance benefits. Supplies is six point four percent of the overall expenditures in water fund. And again, gas up, chemicals, we are seeing office, technology, equipment, uniforms, personnel. The maintenance category here is eight point one percent of the overall expenditures. And our water and wastewater system have a lot more of the expenses. And those are the petroleum-based products for the steel and metal equipment going into the ground. We're seeing anywhere from the fifteen to forty percent increase on those supplies. And then also into the maintenance budget, we are implementing a hundred ninety thousand dollars for two granular activated carbon that goes into the filters for the TTHM project. So that does take four filters and we plan on trying to replace two of those every year just to get on a schedule. And for two, that's gonna be a hundred ninety thousand dollars that we're gonna try to plug in every year. Services, your other professional services, we have to contract out sometimes. Utilities for the facilities, electric, gas, phone, those things, credit card fees, testing. And then you have your transfers. So water has to transfer out for asset replacement, obviously. They do give a little bit of development services operations to them because they provide services to the water fund for a lot of things, our projects and repair and installation. Street use fee is at four percent and that's handled just like any other franchise fee that we would, it would cost another utility provider to come through town on wear and tear for our streets. So it's four percent of our overall water revenues that they are paying out to general fund. And debt service, we transfer that out. That's eleven, twenty-eight percent overall. And then general fund admin fees, that's for internal services, HR, legal, finance, et cetera.
Can you go back to street use fee? That's one of those other questions I always ask about. Can you tell me, just, just explain that again to me?
Yeah, so I can elaborate on it. This is, really, it's no different than a franchise fee that we charge to Atmos or we charge to K-Pub or any other individual that the city owns that right-of-way. And we are charging essentially a fee to a utility service provider to be able to utilize those streets, run their trucks on it. And in fact, our water, our water enterprise, our water utility is one of the biggest in fractures, quite frankly, as far as causing damage to our streets and cutting streets and in, in that, that then the general fund really is having to go back and, and, and fix.
To be clear, on street use fee, who is, who, is everyone paying the street use fee? Or are there commercial users?
A lot of times it's called a right-of-way fee.
But it's, but I mean, I'm not paying a street use fee.
No, the utility is providing, they are paying for the right to utilize those rights of way.
I just want, I just, I just want to make, make it clear that, that it's not on the backs of us. These are the people that are using the roads that are getting charged the fee and then it gets put into our...
Ultimately, every utility decides on how they want to, you know, be able to pay for that use of that right-of-way, right?
Yes, but, but, but not citizens. That's not a separate fee to citizens. That's kind of what I wanted to make clear.
It's built into the cost for the rate payer. Yeah, no different than it's built into your electrical bill or it's built into your cost for fiber internet services or phone services. All of those utilities pay a, pay a use of right-of-way fee.
And now you're saying we are.
They pass it on directly.
That's right. It's cost of business. That's right.
It just doesn't say that.
Right.
That's right.
Okay, so this is just another look at expenditures by department. Water production being one of the larger departments in the water fund. They cover seventeen point six percent of the overall expenditures in the budget. Water reclamation comes in next at ten point nine and then debt service is twenty-eight and a half percent. Gen ops is four point six and that's again, shared liabilities in the water fund, insurance and other small deals like that. And then general fund reimbursement and that's again, fees that general fund... I'm sorry, water fund gives to general fund to cover internal services. Okay, so looking back a little bit, the backstory. In two thousand nineteen, we contracted out to NewGen Strategies to do an intensive rate study for us and they considered our operational costs, debt, capital assets and different things like that. And they were recommending pretty hefty increases upfront. We weren't, council wasn't comfortable with that, just going right in. So we kind of stepped back a little bit and did some smaller increases. So we did increase the base rate a little bit higher, but we also implemented a thousand or gave a thousand gallons to that base rate and then did some small tier rate increases, anywhere from twenty-three cents to a dollar sixty-three. So that was in twenty twenty, twenty twenty-one. Because of COVID, we did absolutely no rate increases just to remain modest in consideration of everything. And then twenty-two last year, we kind of wanted to start up again and built the multi-year rate plan. So we started out with a two percent base rate increase and then two percent tiers pretty much across the board except for that first tier. We, we have been looking back at things and trying to fund everything. We're trying to do grow our fund asset, our asset replacement balance and then looking at just other capital needs. So we were having to adjust our, our rates again, but we still want to take into consideration all of our costs there stayed the same. They're overably fixed because of the pipes and infrastructure in the ground. They're still there. Gallons still come through the pipes, but if anything was to happen, the cost's still gonna be the same to repair or replace. We are still wanting to keep the same thousand gallons. We are still wanting to keep the same thousand gallons on the base rate for customers. Those, um, that fall into that lower tier, one-person household, and they can budget those bills bills better. And then, um, looking at the smaller tier increases throughout. So, um, we want to stick with the carfield twenty fifty goals of water conservation. So, um, lower tier increases, um, for fifteen thousand gallons less and a little bit higher for fifteen thousand gallons plus.
And what was the recommended adjustment?
It was different, uh, based off of, uh, different years, but it was a multi-year forecast, really of rate increases every year. And we've had multiple years where that hasn't been implemented, and so, uh, we do have some catch-up.
Okay, so, um, the fiscal year twenty-three proposed rates, these are the two schedules here, um, residential water rates and residential sewer rates. So, um, on the residential water rates, we're looking at a dollar sixty base rate increase, and then, um, anywhere from ten cents to forty-four cents per one thousand gallons on the tiers. Now, majority of our residential customers fall into the, uh, first tier of one thousand and one gallons to six thousand. And, um, so they'll be seeing about a ten percent per thousand gallons used. And then, um, on the sewer portion of the bill, um, the sewer counts will have a dollar fifty base rate increase and, um, about seventeen cents per thousand gallons on those tiers. Um, this slide here will show you, um, kind of what the bill comparison would be for the average household, um, consumption. So average household's about fifty-three hundred gallons, um, based on our our current, um, sewer averaging month. And, um, we discussed in the July workshop, um, that sixty-five percent of the customers fall here or below. And the average customer will see about four dollar and twenty-six cents increase per month, or fifty-one dollars per year on their water and sewer utility bill. Moving on to the water and sewer capital projects. We have some primary expenditures here on the capital project side, um, for fiscal year twenty-three. We are currently, um, trying to start up, um, nap wa- wastewater collection projects. That is funded by the remaining Legion Lift Station funds from the Texas Water Development Board. Um, Guadalupe River Crossing is underway, um, being constructed, and that should be nearing completion. Lowest tank replacement, uh, we have, uh, the last phase of our, uh, AMI project happening. And then Water Street Water Main enhancements is on the list, and then our Westminster Water Utilities under, under the street. So, um, the Guadalupe River Crossing, that's funded by the, uh, Texas Water Development Board grant that we received, uh, one point five million. And that, um, Legion Lift is, is, remaining funds are gonna cover the nap. And then, um, we have some previous debt that we have have are utilizing the remaining funds on those to cover some of these projects. Okay, and water asset replacement. So, uh, we have a beginning fund balance of four hundred twenty-four thousand dollars. And we are trans- we are proposing to transfer in five hundred thousand, um, for fiscal year twenty-three. And this, uh, fund does grow a little bit of revenue for interest and asset disposal. So we do have existing leases of twenty-nine thousand dollars, it's already accounted for, and we have to plan to purchase, uh, spend that. And then we have some bigger purchases that we wanted to highlight here.
Can you stop for just a second?
Ladies, thank you.
Water distribution has, um, a request for a, um, backhoe. The current one we have on hand is, uh, year two thousand one, it's a hundred and nine thousand dollars today. Dependent on supply chain issues, um, we need to replace that. Um, those are utilized for digging up streets and making repairs. Another larger item is, um, at the wastewater, um, wastewater division. The Burke Dell Lift Station is one of our largest lift stations, and it is the only lift station that does not have a backup pump. So if that was to go down with the, um, volume and it goes through there, we would be in some trouble. And it's anywhere from six months to nine months to repair. So we have to get, uh, we're trying to get a a backup pump for that lift station, that's ninety-six thousand. We have the Xenon plant filters, that's two hundred eighty thousand. Mr. Barron spoke about that at our last budget workshop, those have an average life of seven to eight years. And we need to get that on the books and start replacing those. You have a little bit, some mowers through here at Water Production, ten thousand, those are constant replacement, there's a lot of wear and tear. So we ideally believe that we need to transfer six hundred fifty thousand into this, um, asset replacement fund every year to address those needs. We did the best we can with revenues and and rate increases, um, for now, so we're looking at the five hundred thousand.
What is the, what is the, where are we on replacement schedule? Is that already, is that already in place where?
Replacement schedule for?
For the 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 asset replacement that we need to do, going not just this year, but looking forward.
So as you recall from our budget workshop, we're continuing to fill that out from a robustness standpoint. And so a big part of that has been the assessment effort, uh, via the Water Wastewater Master Plan. And so again, we're, we're, we're getting to a better level of realizing what that annual, uh, savings needs to be. We think that's closer to that six fifty amount, uh, but we are recalibrating that now that we have that better data.
So, um, we're anticipating that that fund balance at the end of fiscal year twenty-three to be close to four hundred thousand. And as EA said, we're still reviewing to know and how much we need to transfer in every year. Moving on to water fund debt service. So, um, our financial management policy just basically states that, uh, water debt service can't be more than thirty-five percent of water fund revenues. And, uh, fiscal year twenty-three, it's gonna be twenty-eight point four percent, which is four point one million dollars for this debt schedules. Any water sewer questions? Julie will cover other funds.
Okay, I'll take you through other funds here. Keep in mind that these, uh, other funds do not have to be balanced, and so most of them are not. Uh, revenues are a little different and generated a little differently, and expenditures aren't always budgeted. So oftentimes, you'll see us come back to you throughout the year to ask for, um, purchases, you know, from various funds, so.
When we, when we look at it, the asset replacements funds are included in other funds too, right?
They are, so when we look at other funds, that is correct. We line them up with the fund that they go with for this presentation, so you could see money moving from one place to the other, just for clarification. They do not write, so they don't fit into the balanced budget model for general fund or water fund. Same with debt, we just wanted to line it up with funds. So hotel occupancy tax, we talk about this each, uh, monthly meeting, uh, so it's been really strong performer, helped us out a lot through COVID, but minus the dips, you know, from closures and things. But I think people will travel here because of what we have to offer, uh, that's not so much inside, but a lot of outdoor activities. So continue to grow there. Some things we're budgeting from this fund this year, we talked about these, um, in a little more detail in workshop. But, uh, one point seven five million to C V B, so that's where most of our hot money goes. And that's because that is an allowable expense, uh, from the comptroller for the use of hot funds. So keep in mind that is very restricted, uh, what we can spend that on. But C V B is one because of the promotion of tourism. We do have a fifty thousand dollar capital improvement line item in here for C V B. And this is what we were gonna call kind of tenant finish-out, um, on their existing building that they're in. Um, and we put that separately so that we'll be able to see that in a separate line item moving forward, so it doesn't throw off the overall, um, change each year. Two hundred seventy-eight thousand for events, and those are multiple events that we host here, uh, within the city. They're either city-hosted events or third-party hosted events, uh, that we help sponsor. And keep in mind, there there are reporting requirements for each of those events that they send back to us to make sure they're meeting, uh, compliance for use of hot funds with the comptroller, because we have to do a report to them each year on our expenditures. A hundred thousand for Playhouse Two Thousand or Calo, that's for operations and that is reimbursement. So they provide us with, um, expenses and we reimburse them up to that amount each year. Sixty thousand for arts co-op marketing, that is, uh, managed through the C V B, um, and designated out, as we've talked about, um, before in workshops. And then some transfer out to the general fund, so a portion of our, uh, tourism staff, um, is paid for out of here for their work on events and things that draw people in. And then just some various, uh, hospitality industry, uh, things. So just a couple charts there for you to kind of see how we're tracking.
Julie, I have a question about that. Now, there is a, a major expense that's gonna be associated with the Calo repair of the roof. Does that come out of hot funds or not?
Potentially, we're, we're looking at, we're trying to get a better idea of what that total expenditure is gonna be. There may be multiple sources we're having to look to.
So we're not, that's not funded in this budget?
It is not, we're still working through that.
Trying to get better ideas of what those cost estimates are.
The one thing that I didn't include in here, and I'm, I don't know how I left it off, is the H H H C transfer. So it's likely to happen, uh, this year. It is in the detail within the budget, I just didn't list it on this slide. So there is a million dollars out of fund balance, uh, going to H H H C, and we've talked about that ending fund balance through workshops. So still about a million dollar fund balance after we make that transfer, so. Library Memorial, so this is actually where that H H H C construction project is gonna come from. So we outlined there, uh, where that funding is coming from, two million dollars, uh, committed from Library Memorial. And then you can see some other things that, you know, we buy on a regular basis from Library Memorial Fund. Uh, with their funding sources primarily being Friends of the Library, and then a lot of private, uh, donations that come into the Library Memorial Fund. So this is not a general fund related at all. TERS, so this one is a little bit, uh, funny this year. So, um, when we got our certified rolls in, we had about a thirty-nine million dollar increase in values in TERS. So, um, frightened me a little bit, spent some time talking to, um, Kirk Had, worked through that. It is primarily, um, a couple of commercial properties that were not fully on the roll last year, so H E B being one of them. But then a lot of increases in valuation on the commercial side. So as we present this budget to the TERS board here in about a month, we don't budget expenditures in this fund because we haven't had a lot of fund balance here, we just started collecting money in this two years ago. We need to keep in mind that of that increase, um, I'll show you this next slide. There's a lot of information here, so we won't go into all this, but I can talk to you about this offline if if you want to. But, uh, basically, you can see down there under considerations, the change in valuation, um, that is primarily commercial. And so the main thing to point out here is Kirk Had does what's called a top-line agreement or a disposition agreement, basically saying, you protested, we agree to disagree, if you want to appeal, you can. And so there are quite a few properties that we anticipate seeing appeals from. So we want to be very careful as we talk about expenditures comparing to that revenue jump there. We went from about sixty-two, sixty-three thousand in revenue budgeted for twenty-two to two hundred and eighty thousand budgeted in twenty-three.
So question on that, so let's say you've got something on the books in in our, in our first year where we captured the the property text to give us that baseline. Remind me, with new properties or improved properties, how, is everything captured in there? Does it start the year, so if you have a, you have a vacant parcel, it's improved, that first year goes into after that, that increment goes into TERS. What about improvements, how does, how does that determine?
I guess it depends on, um, it'll depend on whether it can be calculated as part of what we call the no new revenue rate. So is it apples to apples, the same property, or where there are substantial enough improvements that it's gonna be considered new property? The main thing to remember is, whatever our valuations are, we have to subtract the base year. So the difference is the increment, so we can never change the base year. The difference is the increment that gets transferred into TERS.
I guess the the gray area in my mind is whether it's going from nothing, nothing, just, just, you know, dirt vertical, or if it's a major improvement.
Almost one hundred percent increment? But when it's redevelopment, and you've got a building that's torn down, it's really the value of what it was compared to what the new value is, and the incremental difference between.
Right, because we took the total in that, um, geographical area for the base year of twenty eighteen and established that number. So that number will never change. So whatever the difference is in each year, is subtracted from the base year, and that is how we calculate the increment, based on that taxable value.
And as, as you may recall from previous conversations, one of the other, um, elements that we face within the downtown TERS and that is, we've had numerous properties that have come off the tax rolls, uh, based off of nonprofits that are filed for tax exemption and or other governmental entities that have purchased property within downtown. So that's, it it that balances some of that.
Yeah, I guess I'm, I heard two different things, I'm still confused. So I, to clarify, if I have a piece of unimproved property right now, and before January first, I build something that is gonna be valued at a half million dollars. But before, my property was valued at fifty thousand dollars, what what happens?
The difference becomes increment. So the idea behind the TERS is we want them to develop and improve properties within that geographical region.
Everything above the fifty thousand goes into the increment.
Yes, but remember that it's the overall base value for the whole district, it's not on a per property piece. So the overall, uh, collections may may balance out based off some coming off the rolls and some new value coming on.
Yeah, not property to property, that's a good way to put it. We have a total dollar that's already been established, it's five hundred and forty-two thousand taxable dollars or something like that. And the difference in growth is what we put over there. So the other thing is, people can request exemptions or refunds up to two years. So it's not as notable when you talk about general fund revenue, if we had to do a refund. But when you're talking about revenues, you know, potentially less than, you know, two hundred fifty thousand, a refund could put a big dent in it. So we're just careful as we go through budgeting expenses related to the TERS, to keep in mind what our true fund balance is and and take, you know, some conservative approach when talking about our ending fund balance. Okay, E I C, um, you know, most of you are familiar with this, so funded by four B sales tax each month. Projects are budgeted throughout the year, so unless they're on the books right now, you won't see, um, anticipated expenditures other than things that are on the books right now. So, um, interest revenue budgeted in line with what we do for a general and water fund. And then, uh, sales tax, uh, calculations, and we do a cash flow forecast for E I C each month to kind of give them an idea of what they have available for funding. So you can see right now, two point seven five million anticipated for fiscal year twenty-three. Although if E I C comes back to us next month and approves a project, then we won't amend their budget. Because again, it doesn't have to be balanced, they just work off of their cash flow and cash available and projections. And lastly, these are some other small funds, um, that really, they don't have a big, big impact overall citywide, but important to recognize. So Garage, um, Internal Service Fund, so that's funded through, uh, departments within the city who utilize our city garage for repairs and maintenance. Um, and you will see that as an actual expense line item, um, in each fund. Um, Employee Benefits Trust, which you guys have walked through here recently, uh, Parkland Dedication, uh, which we did some changes to that mid-twenty-two, and I, uh, that we bring in some things back to you for multi-year later on in the year. Police Special Revenue, um, again, these are all dedicated funds, so we can't take money from these funds to do anything operational. They're very specific as to what we can use them for. PEG is gonna be technology-type things, and again, a big funding source there is cable. So as EA was talking about earlier about use fees and things like that, so, uh, some of our bigger cable providers pay franchise fees to that fund, which is what funds that. Municipal Court Special Revenue, um, both landfill funds, um, both have a little bit different function. The idea there is if we were to close the landfill today, we have to have the fund balance to maintain it for thirty years. So big calculation in our audit that we talk about every year, particularly pertaining to that. Um, and then some other ones down there, uh, Library Endowment, uh, which is a separate library fund. Calo, which we addressed a little bit ago, uh, with the roof, which we're still working through, um, some things there. And then the Grant Fund, uh, which we've been talking about a lot, because we've had a lot of, uh, grants roll through here lately, which is good news for us. Um, and then Insurance Reserve, we kind of budget that expense on historical data, because there's really no other way to do it. If we have a big storm year, that's gonna be higher, um, if we have, you know, a pretty normal year, it's gonna be a little bit lower, so. Okay, lastly, uh, just an update on the Grant Fund. So, um, keep in mind, and we talked about this last time, this is a special fund utilized to hold grant revenues. Doesn't mean we always expend them from this fund. So oftentimes, if it's a large project like, uh, the body cams or, uh, police communication, those kind of things, we'll transfer it out to C I P, because it will be multi-year, and we always come to council, uh, with a request for that transfer, either through a budget amendment or, um, through an expenditure request. So, uh, Body Cameras, as you know, six hundred and eighty thousand dollar project, uh, funded, uh, partially with grants, two hundred and thirty-eight thousand. And then, um, as council approved, the transfer to C I P from ARPA for the remaining of that. Household Hazardous Waste, we do get a grant from ACOG every other year that our solid waste manager applies for. So, um, that money hits here, and then the remainder is paid for out of the landfill fund. C D B G, so this is for some downtown improvements that we continue to talk about. And that'll be in C I P as well, and then, uh, the Tech Stock Grant. And then you can see, moving down, we have some generator grants that we have recently been awarded. And so that's going to be close to $5 million. And I think the moral of the story here is, we're doing the best we can to go out and source money from different areas.
These are all, these grants are all secured at this point?
Yes.
Those are not anticipated?
Not anticipated. Yes, and this does not include our second tranche of ARPA, which we have not received at this time. So, that will be a later discussion. But, we really doing a lot of work on the staff side, as well as working with some third parties to go out and find resources that we just don't have within our, within our budgets to be able to fund some of these bigger ticket items.
I may be confused, but why am I not seeing some of the amounts of those in the grant fund line items?
Well, because they're transferred probably in CIP. Because we transfer, it comes in as a revenue and comes out, so the generator? No, so you're talking about on the revenue side?
No, on the expenditure side, out of the grant fund into the CIP.
It'll be a transfer out to CIP if it's something that's anticipated to happen in '23. This is just a grant overview, so not all of this is going to be wrapped up in '23. So for example, the grant we've just been awarded from FEMA could take a couple of years before we actually see that come to light. So we didn't budget that revenue because we can't count on getting it in '23. So, if we do happen to receive it in '23, then we'll come back and say, hey, we got the money, now we need permission to transfer it out. So we don't want to put something in there that we're not absolutely certain is going to happen, that's why. The things you're seeing us transfer out are the absolutes. Any other, other fund questions? Okay, so, really to wrap up, what I'll be coming to you with tonight is a resolution to basically adopt the, adopt setting the proposed tax rate, so then we can set public hearings for that. So, we'll have a presentation that'll be short tonight, just with the resolution that you've already seen, to discuss that, that resolution. And then, if that is approved, then we'll move forward with legal publications and those kind of things to set public hearings, which will happen, one in August and one in September. Do you have anything you want to add?
Any final questions or comments, counsel?
Nope.
Good job.
Thank you for your time, we appreciate it.
Thank you very much, Julie. Thank you and thank you guys for all of your time.
Yes, thank you.
All right, is there anything else at this moment, EA? I don't believe so. At 5:52, we will close the City Council Workshop.